Good morning, everyone. The House Judiciary Committee will come to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Chairman Briggs.
Here.
Representatives Abney.
What is the form? On leave?
Oh, leave.
Leave.
Carroll.
Leave.
Donahue.
Leave.
Hanbridge.
Online.
Hohenstein.
Here.
Howard.
Leave.
Kenyatta.
Leave.
Kincaid.
Leave.
Mays.
Leave.
Piele.
Leave.
Rab.
Leave.
Sanchez.
Online.
Schusterman. Chairman Kaufman.
Here.
Representatives Bonner.
Online.
Borwitz. Ecker.
On leave.
Ham.
On leave.
Kale.
On leave.
Kerwin. Clunk.
She's on, she should be walking in any moment, but yeah.
Okay.
On leave at the moment.
Kuzma.
On leave.
Ledbetter.
On leave.
Rigby.
On leave.
Chalaba.
On leave.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Representative Piele has joined us as well. Just for the information, there is a competing hearing that some of our members are at and will be joining us when they, when they're done over there. Just some quick reminders of rules we follow in order to make our meetings professional, civil, and productive. Please remember to silence your cell phones. Keep in mind that this meeting is being streamed and recorded. In none of the rules and practices of the House, the use of props during House proceedings and debate is strictly prohibited. I appreciate your cooperation in maintaining the decorum and respect of this committee. Also, all of the hearing material and meeting materials for the 11 o'clock meeting are available via the one QR code that is posted around the room. All the information is accessible through that. Today, we come together for this public hearing on House Bill 1957. House Bill 1957 by Representative Aden, Hanbridge, and Mays is a proposed constitutional amendment to enshrine the right to personal reproductive liberty within the Pennsylvania Constitution. We will take testimony on this proposed constitutional amendment to satisfy the House rule, I don't know whose idea that was, it was mine, it was a good rule, requiring all proposed constitutional amendments have a public hearing before they are considered for a vote. For the information of the public and the members, we will continue to accept written testimony, and it will be included in the record of this hearing. At this time, I'm going to recognize Chairman Kaufman for opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to make note that the gentle lady, Representative Clunk from Hanover, is present in the room for the hearing. Thank you. As we left this room last Wednesday on a, another non-session week, we were intending to be coming back, I believe, next week for session, and there was going to be no further business considered before the committee, but all of the sudden, the great import of a constitutional amendment came up, and who knows what the urgency is. It certainly isn't that the abortion industry in Pennsylvania is waning as more abortions are performed every single year in the Commonwealth. Maybe, I don't know, maybe it's because we're in day 114 of being without a Commonwealth budget. We need to change the subject, possibly. I don't know. There's something coming up November 4th, I think. Maybe the subject needs to be changed there, but there's absolutely no reason to be dragged in on an on-session week to do a constitutional amendment such as this. But here we are. So as, as the majority or the minority does, we generally try to show up the best we can at last notice. As usual, the minority, there are very few in the room. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next, we will get right to our testifiers. Every testifier will given, will be given their testimony. We will provide questions until the end of all the testimonies complete, and if time permits. We ask each testifier to keep your testimony to between six or seven minutes. First, I see Megan Orbich is on the line. If you can, your camera is turned on. We've just spotlighted you. If you could provide your testimony, thank you for joining us. Megan, you may begin. Thank you very much, Ms. Orbich. We appreciate your testimony. As I mentioned, we're going to hold questions till the end if we have time. You're more than happy to, to stay online if there is any questions for you, but I can understand based on scheduling if, if you need to leave. Second, we will hear from Dr. Erica Goldblatt Hyatt. Thank you for joining us, Doctor. Dr. Hyatt is an academic, clinician, administrator, author, and parent with 20 years' worth of social work experience, particularly, particularly focused on reproductive health care and reproductive justice. Dr. Hyatt, you're in order and may begin your testimony. Thank you very much, Dr. Hyatt. And if you, if you could stay until the end, that would be great, but I understand with your schedule, if you, if you need to leave, understand that as well. Third, we will be hearing from Laura Hernandez, the Senior Policy Associate for Reproductive Rights at the State Innovation Exchange. Ms. Hernandez, thank you for making time for us today. You are in order and may begin your testimony.
Dear committee members, thank you for having me today. My name is Laura Hernandez, and I'm the Senior Policy Associate of Reproductive Rights at State Innovation Exchange, also known as SIX.
I'm sorry. Is your camera on, or is there an issue, or if you prefer to keep it off, that is understandable as well?
It's, oh, it's on. I'm not sure. Give me one. Here we go. Let me know if you can see me.
We cannot. It doesn't look like it's, I mean, it's, it's looking like it's off, but it's not, it's not on our.
Sorry about that. I'm not sure what's happening. If you want to go to the next person, well, I figured that's all. It's fine.
We are waiting until 10:30 for the next testifier, but if you, you can, it's totally fine if you like just to share your testimony with the camera not on. We're okay with that.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm not sure why it's working, why it's not working. Dear committee members, thank you.
I'm sorry, Laura. We are going to check to see if Professor Kirk is on.
Oh, yeah.
If Professor Kirk is on, she can join us. I don't see, is our technician saying, has she joined the meeting? She has not. I believe she's joining right at 10:30. So Laura, you can begin or proceed, and I apologize for the interruption. I will, I will not interrupt again. Thank you. There we go. We can see you. Awesome. Thank you.
Dear committee members, thank you for having me today. My name is Laura Hernandez, and I'm the Senior Policy Associate of Reproductive Rights at State Innovation Exchange, also known as SIX. SIX is a national organization dedicated to empowering state legislators to lead boldly with their communities and make transformative changes. In my work, I help lead SIX's Reproductive Freedom Leadership Council, the RFLC, which is the country's only network of state legislators who are championing reproductive health, rights, and justice. The RFLC network is made up of nearly 700 visionary state leaders who are changing the game to achieve an equitable, resilient, healthy, and prosperous future, including reproductive freedom for all. On behalf of SIX Action, I'm testifying in support of House Bill 1957. This amendment to the state constitution will establish a fundamental right for Pennsylvanians to make independent decisions about their own reproductive health care, including pregnancy care, abortion care, contraception, and fertility care. Weeks after the Supreme Court overturned Roe v. Wade in 2022, state constitutional amendments were placed directly in front of voters in California, Kansas, Kentucky, Michigan, Ohio, and Vermont to either restrict or expand abortion access. In each of these states, constituents voted to protect access. Following these victories, several states in 2023 also moved to enshrine permanent reproductive health protections by introducing proactive state ballot measures. In the 2024 general election last year, voters across seven states, including Arizona, Colorado, Maryland, Missouri, Montana, Nevada, and New York, approved constitutional amendments to reaffirm that abortion and reproductive health care must be protected. The right to make personal decisions about contraceptive use is also important for all people in the United States. It is especially critical for historically marginalized groups who have been subjected to reproductive coercion, which combined with other systemic barriers, have limited their ability to make their own decisions about birth control and to access it. Contraceptive deserts or geographical areas that lack reasonable access to the full range of contraceptive methods exist in every state in the country. In Pennsylvania alone, over 752,000 women in need of publicly funded contraception live in contraceptive deserts, and 52,000 women in need live in counties without access to a single-help center that provides the full range of contraceptive methods. The vast majority of people support access to birth control, and 14 states and the District of Columbia have legislative or constitutional protections for the right to contraception. All the states that have enshrined protections for contraception in their constitution, California, Michigan, Ohio, Tennessee, and Vermont, have done so since the Dobbs decision, recognizing how crucial true contraceptive choice, access, and affordability are in the shifting abortion care landscape. Fertility health care is also crucial for family-making and family-building as it provides a path to parenthood for a variety of people: those who are single, in LGBTQ relationships, undergoing gender-affirming treatment, have genetic or other health concerns, like cancer patients, people with disabilities, and/or people diagnosed with infertility, among others. And there is overwhelming support for fertility health care access. And there is overwhelming support for fertility health care access and protections. According to Pew Research, 70% of adults believe that people having access to IVF, the most common method of assisted reproduction, is a good thing. And a survey conducted by the Associated Press-Norfolk Center for Public Affairs Research found that about 6 in 10 adults favor protecting access to IVF, including 77% of Democrats and 56% of Republicans. A future without access to fertility health care leaves millions of people around the county without, and the, sorry, in the country, without the ability to build their families. By passing this amendment, Pennsylvania would join over a dozen states who have codified the right to reproductive freedom in their state laws and ensure their reproductive health care in the state remains legal and accessible. The overturning of Roe v. Wade led millions of people across the country to lose access to health care overnight. Patients who could once turn to the local providers are now forced to travel hundreds of miles, scrambling to find appointments, and paying out of pocket for care that should be a basic right. Every Pennsylvanian, like every American, deserves access to safe, legal, compassionate, and affordable health care, especially throughout pregnancy. By voting in favor of this amendment, you are affirming to your constituents that their bodily autonomy matters and that their ability to make personal decisions about their families and futures is worth protecting. At a time when public trust in government and the democratic process is eroding, enshrining the right to reproductive freedom for Pennsylvanians as written in this amendment is a powerful step toward restoring that trust. SIX Action testifies today in support of this amendment because it will protect access to abortion, contraception, and fertility care while affirming Pennsylvania as a state committed to reproductive liberty. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hernandez. We appreciate your time and your testimony. I think we're going to pause. We have a 10:30 expected arrival of Professor Kirk, who is just joining us. So we're going to wait till she gets active, and then I will introduce her, and she will begin. Thank you for joining us, Professor Kirk. We are joined by Professor Elizabeth Kirk, who is an Assistant Professor of Law at the Columbus School of Law at the Catholic University of America and co-director of the Center for Law and Human Person. Professor Kirk, thank you for making time for us today. You are in order and may begin your testimony.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for accommodating my teaching schedule. I am grateful for the opportunity to testify regarding HB 1957, a bill which proposes an amendment to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania providing for personal reproductive liberty. The aim of my longer-written testimony, which I submitted, is to provide a scholarly legal analysis of HB 1957, and I urge you to read it in its entirety. But what I would like you to come away with are these few things. First, that the predictable and likely effect of this amendment will be to invalidate existing Pennsylvania law with respect to abortion specifically, but reproduction more generally, and deter the enactment of future common sense legislation. Second, that the amendment's undefined terms, individual and reproductive liberty, suggests it will be applied to persons and situations far beyond women seeking abortion. And, and, third, that the likely impact of the amendment's nondiscrimination clause will be that all such services, not just abortion, will be paid for by the taxpayer. Before I explain those concerns with the amendment, I want to point out a kind of special concern, I think, for you as legislators regarding this amendment. And this is that if the 50 years between Roe and Dobbs taught us anything, it was that enshrining abortion access in the Constitution did not bring civic peace on this question. So whatever your view on abortion policy, Dobbs was meant to allow states, the people through their legislatures, you, to enact laws that reflect their complicated views on these difficult questions. And the legislative process is the way that Americans work through these fraught questions and come up with solutions, sometimes compromises, that work in a diverse and pluralistic society. I know you know this, this is your job, but on the other hand, constitutions are generally more suited to laying out the conditions or the frameworks of government, right? And they don't lend themselves to resolving difficult policy questions. So the effect of this amendment that I'm going to describe would shackle you, the legislature, and prevent the people of the Commonwealth from expressing important state interests or providing guardrails, even minimal ones, in an ethically sensitive area where women can be coerced. So again, even if you're pro-choice, this amendment ties the hands of you, the legislature, to safeguard against abuse, to preserve informed consent, to be responsive to whatever might come down the line in terms of scientific developments or medical discoveries, et cetera. So this amendment, should you pass it, would be a sort of abdication of your lawmaking authority to the judiciary, right, to fashion policy on a matter that's deeply relevant to important state interests and to the protection of the common good. Okay, so to the effect, to the likely effect of the amendment, I don't think that most advocates of the amendment are transparent about what effect it will have. Many proponents say things like, this kind of amendment will just restore Roe or protect our existing laws, and those things have purchase with, you know, most people who aren't steeped in the jurisprudence of abortion. And I think those euphemisms are misleading. So what would the amendment do? First, it will not protect your existing laws, it will be the occasion for striking them down. The language of the amendment states that the Commonwealth may not deny the fundamental right unless justified by a compelling state interest achieved by the least restrictive means. This technical legal language is known among lawyers as strict scrutiny, and if adopted, every law relating to reproductive liberties would be subjected to this intense scrutiny. And it's such a high bar that colloquially it's referred to as strict in theory, fatal in fact, meaning that very few laws survive challenge under this rigorous test. And we know this because we can look to both federal law and state law to see how this plays out. When the Supreme Court first adopted or identified the federal constitutional right to abortion in Roe, it at first adopted the same test, strict scrutiny. And in the years following Roe, courts invalidated nearly every law that came before it because of this very high standard. Now, as Pennsylvanians, I think, likely well know, or at least Pennsylvanian lawyers likely well know, when the court revisited Roe in Casey, right, it affirmed, of course, the constitutional right to abortion, but it took a look at the strict scrutiny standard and it said, you know, that's actually too strict. It doesn't allow the state to advance certain interests that it has that are legitimate, that really don't bear on the woman's ultimate right to choose abortion. And so the Casey Court got rid of strict scrutiny and adopted a different standard called undue burden. But we can look to those pre-Kasey cases and see what strict scrutiny does. We can also see in states that have adopted strict scrutiny in interpreting their own state constitution, as you're seeking to do through this amendment. And it's the beginning of a long line of cases striking down the laws on their books. My written testimony refers to dozens of instances of this happening at the state level, but I want to point you in particular to the recent examples just in the last couple of years. So Arizona, Michigan, Missouri, Ohio, they all passed amendments like the one, similar, different in an important respect I'll mention in a minute, but they all adopted amendments incorporating strict scrutiny, and all of them are embroiled in litigation defending their state laws, many of which have now been enjoined. So at a minimum, under the strict scrutiny test, your existing laws will be subject to extensive, expensive litigation that the state will be involved in. Second, there's little reason to trust your laws will fare any better, right, than all of these other laws. And so even your laws that have broad public support, like parental involvement, or the 24-hour waiting period, or late-term restrictions, right, those are all vulnerable under this standard. And then every future law that you might think might be a good idea, as you want to be responsive to change in circumstances, will be immediately subject to the criticism, you know, this is going to be subject to strict scrutiny in the courts, this is a waste of our legislative resources to even try to address this problem. So, second, the amendment will not restore Roe because it goes far beyond even what Roe did, and this is why. Because in Roe and in Casey, regardless of whether they adopted strict scrutiny or undue burden to examine laws, both cases provided a kind of sliding scale. For Roe, it was the trimester framework; for Casey, it was viability. But to recognize the nature of the state's interests grew, became more compelling, became more important, as the pregnancy progressed. And so both cases allowed, you know, written by people who supported the right to abortion, right? So both cases acknowledged that states should have more latitude in restricting abortion after viability. HB 1957 makes no such allowance. Moreover, this amendment would make you an outlier even among your sister states. So the amendments I previously mentioned, Arizona, Michigan, Missouri, Montana, Nevada, Ohio, all of them recognized this, had a viability framework built into those amendments. HB 1957 makes no such allowance. So strict scrutiny will apply in Pennsylvania to any law touching on abortion throughout the entire pregnancy, from conception past viability to the delivery room, past your current 24-week gestational limit, meaning that post-viability regulation or even born-alive protections are vulnerable under this amendment. Another way in which this amendment goes beyond Roe is its scope, that is, who it protects and what it protects. So first, who it protects is individuals, and the word individual is not defined. So it raises interpretive questions. Somebody's, some court is going to have to deal with the question of who this statute protects, and the plain text makes no distinction between adults and minors. Now, numerous courts, including the Supreme Court, have held that minor, while minors may have constitutional rights, they're different from adults because children are immature, they're vulnerable, and of course, we have the presence of the fundamental rights of the parents, right, to be involved in the decision-making and care and custody of their children. And so, but the plain meaning of this amendment contains no reference to the unique status of children and contains no limitation. So it suggests that Pennsylvania courts may grant an absolute right to abortion or any other reproductive decision, such as sterilizations, to children under this amendment, which substantially weakens the Commonwealth's interest in both protecting parental rights but also protecting minors from things like reproductive coercion, sex trafficking, et cetera. Another interpretive question in terms of the scope is the phrase reproductive liberty. So this isn't just about abortion, right? It's, the amendment provides a kind of non-exhaustive list of things, including abortion, which this amendment is intended to protect. And so reproductive liberty could be interpreted to include decisions regarding many other matters, which similarly would be removed from the province of the legislature to really shape and to respond to the needs of citizens. Okay, a final point is that it is predictable and likely that the nondiscrimination clause in the proposed amendment will lead to constitutionally required taxpayer funding, not only of abortion, which admittedly your Supreme Court has already telegraphed that it will require, but because of this broad scope of what the amendment purports to protect, you know, reproductive liberties writ large, any services or procedures or resources determined to be protected by the fundamental right to liberty will likely be required to be paid for by the taxpayer. I suspect, like all governments and all household budgets, you have many demands and needs that you seek to meet in your day-to-day work, and this amendment will get you further into the business of funding every procedure, every service, every medication related to reproduction. And again, we know this because we can look at case law from other jurisdictions that have adopted strict scrutiny. With only one exception, every state court that recognized an independent right to abortion, an independent state right to abortion, and that adopted strict scrutiny, has struck down limits on taxpayer funding of abortion on nondiscrimination grounds. So in conclusion, the proposed amendment adopts a standard of review, strict scrutiny, with no limiting framework, like viability, that is so protective of abortion and any other decision that would be deemed to fall within reproductive liberty, that it is virtually certain to both strike down existing Pennsylvania law and to discourage future common sense laws. And I think legislators who support this amendment must admit that they support those things, that they support relinquishing lawmaking with respect to grave matters like permitting unrestricted abortion throughout pregnancy, even of healthy, viable infants, or that they support allowing minor girls to get abortions or sterilizations or other reproductive treatments without their parents' knowledge, support, or consent, and that they support all of these things being paid for by the taxpayer, because that is what the clear consequence of this amendment is according to the overwhelming weight of precedent from other states and from pre-Kasey federal law. So again, I urge you to read my written testimony in its entirety, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to contribute to this discussion on this important question.
Great. Thank you, Professor Kirk. And it's amazing that you joined us right when it was time for, you know, the previous testifier ended, the timing worked out very well. So I'm glad that you were able to accommodate our schedule. We did go a little bit long, but it was very interesting, and I wanted to thank you for that. Our final testifier is Dr. Sarah Gutman. Dr. Gutman is a board-certified obstetrician-gynecologist. Dr. Gutman, thank you for making time again to join us today. You are in order and may begin your testimony.
Good morning, and thank you so much for having me. I'm happy to be here and appreciate the opportunity to testify in support of House Bill 1957, the Reproductive Rights Amendment, which, as we've heard, is a proposed constitutional amendment that would safeguard personal reproductive liberty. As mentioned, my name is Dr. Sarah Gutman. I'm a board-certified obstetrician-gynecologist in Philadelphia. I've specialized training in complex family planning, and I'm a fellow with the Physicians for Reproductive Health. I'm here to share with you my clinical expertise and my knowledge around reproductive health care that I provide to patients in Pennsylvania. As an OB-GYN, I provide a really wide range of care. I do routine preventative care, including cancer screenings and annual exams. I see patients who are planning a pregnancy and those who are hoping to prevent one. I provide contraceptive counseling so patients can choose and access the contraceptive methods that are going to work best for them. I provide prenatal care, I deliver babies. I also provide abortion care when my patients need to end a pregnancy. I'm here today because I see every day how deeply personal decisions about reproductive health and pregnancy are, and I know this amendment would help protect my patients' ability to make those decisions for themselves. When I sit down with my patients, it's really heartbreaking to know that the health care I provide is now illegal in many states. My patients are people that you know. They are making decisions based on many complex factors, which only they can possibly fully know and understand. They are often already parents, and they're thinking about their existing families. Some cannot continue a pregnancy because of their own health. Some have just learned about a devastating fetal diagnosis, as we heard earlier, and need to end a pregnancy that they were desperate to create. Because I live in practice in Pennsylvania, if my patients receive these diagnoses on time, I can continue to be their doctor during one of the hardest times of their lives. I can discuss with my patients the decision to continue a pregnancy or to end it, and I can provide them with the medical care that they need. I've had the incredible privilege of caring for patients in a subsequent healthy pregnancy, a pregnancy that may never have happened if they hadn't been able to access abortion care. Protecting personal reproductive liberty is a critical element in combating existing social and racial disparities in maternal reproductive health. Abortion bans disproportionately impact people who are Black, Indigenous, the LGBTQ community. community, low-income individuals. More specifically, Black birthing people are more likely to suffer from pregnancy complications if forced to continue a pregnancy and give birth. In fact, Pennsylvania's maternal mortality rate is two times higher among Black women than the overall population. These communities face challenges that make it more difficult to travel out of state for care, which requires money, transportation, childcare time. No one should be forced to leave your home to access normal, essential, life-saving care. In addition to being an OB-GYN, I am a mother. My own two children were born here in Pennsylvania, and I'm really excited to raise them here. But I want my children to have the same autonomy over their reproductive lives that I have had in mine. This amendment would protect those rights. By supporting House Bill 1957, you can protect and support all of Pennsylvanians' personal reproductive liberty now and for those generations to come. Thank you so much for having me. I'm looking forward to hearing your questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gutman. And real quick, I just want to acknowledge, we've been joined during the hearing by a few members online, and I think this is everyone that came in after roll call. Representative Kincaid, Representative Mays, Representative Hamm. I think Representative Bonner came on during roll call, Handbridge, and Sanchez was on. I just wanted to kind of let folks know who was participating online. Before we turn to questions, and let us know if you have any from the members, I would like to thank everyone who testified today. I understand many of you made adjustments to your schedule to participate, and we greatly appreciate you. We do have a few minutes before our 11 o'clock voting meeting for any questions. Are there any questions from folks on teams? Just raise your hand. Anyone in line? Anyone in person? Representative Kerwin, you are in order to ask questions or comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and my question is going to be for Dr. Kirk. Dr. Kirk, in your testimony, you mentioned that parental notifications, as well as other common sense safeguards surrounding abortion, would likely fail the strict scrutiny standard of review enacted by this proposed constitutional amendment. Reading through the constitutional amendment, I'm wondering, are there any safeguards in this proposed constitutional amendment given to the rights of parents to guide their minor child's medical decisions?
No, no. The amendment, I mean, the text of the amendment protects individuals, which is not defined. Other states in, facing similar interpretive questions, have interpreted the individual to include minors. As I said in my testimony, and I explain more in my written testimony, the Supreme Court has acknowledged that even where, under a pre-Dobbs environment, minors have the right, you know, have constitutional rights, such as the right to abortion, they are not coextensive with adults in the context of parental rights. And so the Supreme Court sort of fashioned, right, a sort of middle ground, allowing for the role of parents to play out, subject to judicial bypass. But states operating under strict scrutiny have not so accommodated parental rights. Again, I don't have here the complete sites in front of me, but states like Florida, which was later overturned by a constitutional amendment, and Montana, have found that the minor's right to an abortion under similar statutes trumps parental rights in those cases.
Thank you, Dr. Kirk, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative Kerwin. Representative Borowitz, you are in order to ask a question of a testifier or make a comment.
Okay, yes, thank you. Some general comments and then a question at the end. So the first testifier, Megan, I think your key comment was when you said, "You do not regret the decision you made to have your child." So thank you for that. I think all moms, you know, that make the decision to have life do not regret it, and that's what I'm fighting for, is the life of every unborn child. Number two, Dr. Goldblast, sadly, you were told that your child was never meant for this world. Well, I'm sorry, that was a lie. You know, your child was meant for this world, because as Charlie Kirk said, dependency doesn't equal the degree of moral worth. And so your child was worthy of life. Also, you said birthing person. Only women have children and babies and give birth. Number four, testifier. Thank you, Professor Kirk, for speaking truth. And last, Dr. Gutman, you said abortion is not, is care, and you specifically said it's life-saving care. No, it's actually killing a human life, right? It's a disregard for human life, is what I hear. And there's a complete disregard in America for human life in this issue, and the understanding that all human life has value, by God. The baby has unique DNA apart from its mom, and it's not our DNA. It's that baby's unique DNA, their fingerprint. So the question I guess I could ask Professor Kirk is, would this constitutional amendment, would it allow on-demand abortion through all nine months of pregnancy?
Yes, that's the, I believe, the predictable and likely outcome of the legal effect of this amendment is to permit unrestricted abortion throughout the entire pregnancy. So your current 24-week gestational limit, I think, would be vulnerable under this, the legal standard used by this amendment, which, as I said, is not only a very, very high legal bar, but also contains within itself no limiting factor. So no reference to viability or any other limitation on the access to abortion.
Okay, so I have a model baby of a 20-week baby. We allow abortion four weeks past this in Pennsylvania, and then I have a model baby of a 28-week baby, right? So imagine up to 40 weeks in this state disregarding a child that has hands, eyes, and how God made them, in the womb. This is a model of a baby in the womb at 26 to 28 weeks. And so their feet are formed, their eyes, it's a perfect human being. And so we've got to regard life in America again, and we have to face what we've allowed in this nation for 50-plus years and the grace that God gave us when Roe came down, after 50 years of 63 million lives lost. Thank you, Professor. Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman Kaufman.
Thank you.
Do we have the opportunity to respond?
Professor Kirk.
Sorry, any, yes, of course. Ms. Horvich.
Yeah. So I do want to respond to, do I have regrets? I don't have regrets. I love my son. He's an absolute joy. I think sometimes it's a little bit selfish, quite frankly. I have a cousin who also has a child with medical needs, and she told me when I was pregnant, "You have to make decisions and not look back and regret your decisions, and just look forward and continue to make the best decisions that you can." And that's what I try to do for him, because I don't know what the future holds, so I don't have regrets. But sometimes I look at the suffering of my son, and I think I'm being selfish, because I love him so much and I don't want to lose him. But he suffers. He has had tremendous suffering. And if you have not personally experienced that, you can't understand. These babies that are born, they're not born without pain. Doctors cannot make them comfortable. My son gasped for breath for 14 months of his life and was sedated for diaper changes. The last thing I want to say about like a fully-formed baby, like, he was a fully-formed human being on the outside, dying every day. So we sat next to him every single day while he was dying on the outside. By the grace of God, he's still with us today, I will say that, and he is happy and thriving. But it's tenuous. There are days that he falls off a cliff and we spend weeks in the hospital. And that's the life that we live, and if you've not experienced that, it is very easy to sit there and say that you would or would not do something. So I don't have regrets, but sometimes I think that my position is a little bit selfish because of my love for him.
Thank you very much, Ms. Horvich. Any of the other testifiers want to, since you were mentioned, any response?
Yes.
You'd like to, Dr. Hyatt, you have the...
Yep. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. I want to clarify with my language. There are transgender men in Pennsylvania who are making reproductive decisions for their lives, and to ignore that they exist would be to be discounting members of our Commonwealth.
Thank you. So we are, Chairman Kaufman has a comment, but we are going to go to Representative Bonner, but in the means of just encouraging brevity, if possible. Representative Bonner, you're in order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for Professor Kirk. And my question, thank you. My question, Professor Kirk, have you been made aware or seen or read any legislation or constitutional provisions in any other state that is more extreme in the protection of abortion rights in any state in the United States?
What I would say is that there are other amendments that similarly have adopted strict scrutiny with no framework for limiting its application. And so, but Pennsylvania would be an outlier among the general approaches, even in states that support abortion rights, who still both allow some kind of, you know, guardrails on the practice of abortion, as well as requiring women to, ensuring that they have, genuinely provide informed consent and that sort of thing. So Pennsylvania is among outliers in an extreme protection of abortion through this amendment.
Are you aware of any other state that would have more extreme protection of abortion rights than...
No.
So this would be the most extreme that you would encounter?
This is an extreme protection, and I want to reiterate that it's not just about abortion. It's about all services that would be related to reproduction, so sterilization, you know, gender transition surgeries, whatever you might imagine would be related to that. It's not just about abortion. But yes, it's the most extreme version of protection for those bundle of activities.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony.
Thank you. Representative Kaufman.
I note we're 11 o'clock, and the professor pretty much answered in our last response what I was going to ask, so I will go back to the chairman and let him continue on with the next agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. In closing, I want to thank all of our staff, the members of the committee, and all of the testifiers for participating in today's hearing. Appreciate everyone for engaging in respectful and insightful dialogue on this very important issue. The House Committee hearing on House Bill 1957 stands adjourned. Thank you very much. We will be just taking a 30-second pause and then going into the voting meeting. So the testifiers, you can stay if you're interested in the rest of the agenda, and or you can get on with the rest of your day. It's very interesting work we do, so thank you all for joining us. Good morning, everyone. The House Judiciary Voting Committee meeting will come to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Chairman Briggs.
Here.
Representatives Abney.
Designation online.
Carroll.
Designation.
Donahue.
Designation.
Handbridge.
Designation online.
Owenstein.
Here.
Howard.
Designation online.
Kenyatta.
Designation.
Kincaid.
Designation online.
Mays.
Designation online.
Pielee.
Design, here, Pielee's here.
Rab.
Designation.
Sanchez.
Designation online.
Schusterman. Chairman Kaufman.
Here.
Representatives Bonner.
Designation.
Borowitz.
Present. She went to the restroom.
Ecker.
Designation.
Hamm.
Designation.
Cale.
Designation.
Kerwin.
Here.
Clunk. Kuzma.
Designation.
Ledbetter.
Designation.
Rigby. Shalaba.
Designation.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you, Secretary. Having a quorum, we will proceed with today's agenda. Just a quick reminder of some rules we will follow in order to make our meetings professional, civil, and productive. Please remember to silence your cell phones. Keep in mind that this meeting is being recorded and televised, and again, please, no props. They are not permitted based on our House rules. First, the chair calls up House Bill 679 by Representative Powell, six, I'm sorry, 670 by Representative Powell. The chair recognizes Representative Powell on teams for brief remarks on the bill. You are in order.
Thank you so much, Chairman, and thank you to the committee for the consideration of this really important bill. I wanted the opportunity to talk a little bit about it, because it is very clear and concise in what it aims to do. The FACE Act, which also is in action at the federal level, would allow for, at the state level, us to have an opportunity to establish protective acts of protesting outside of healthcare clinics that provide all types of services, including mental health screening, HIV/STD services, reproductive health services. Our bill, which we crafted with a number of stakeholders, seeks to find the right balance of allowing folks to protest, which... of allowing folks to protest, which obviously is under their First Amendment right, but also seeks to protect the rights of patients, making sure that they have access to receive life-saving, life-changing care at these clinics. And so I'm happy to answer any questions as permissible, but appreciate your consideration of this balanced legislation to allow for folks to receive care as they need and deserve, but also folks to continue to exercise their First Amendment right.
Thank you, Representative Powell. Counsel, please provide a brief description of the bill.
Mr. Chairman, House Bill 670 protects access to reproductive health service facilities by criminalizing the obstruction of access, damage to, or interference with the operation of reproductive healthcare facility, as well as establishes civil cause of action. A person convicted under this section may be sentenced to imprisonment of up to one year and/or a fine for up to $3,000. A judge must consider if the person was previously convicted under this section when determining penalties. The bill also establishes a civil cause of action for reproductive health service facility, clients, providers, assistants, owners, and agents who incur bodily injury or damage to, or loss of property as a result of conduct prohibited under Title 18, Section 3207.1. A plaintiff may seek general, special damages, also punitive damages, reasonable attorneys' fees and costs, as well as a preliminary permanent injunction. Court orders issued under this section shall be transmitted by the pathonitary, and if the court issues a restraining order or injunction, the order shall contain the following statement: violations of this order is a criminal offense. Violations of an order issued under this section shall be a misdemeanor of the second degree, but if bodily injury results from the violation, the violation shall become a misdemeanor of the first degree. Nothing in this section may be construed to prohibit, limit, or punish religiously motivated speech or conduct that is otherwise protected by the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth, or the Religious Freedom Protection Act. The bill takes effect in 60 days and there are no amendments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel. The question is, will the committee report the bill, House Bill 670? Are there any comments on the bill? Representative Borowitz, you are in order on House Bill 670.
I'm sure you're elated, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman Briggs. We've already seen the horrible effects and abuse of this law at the federal level. With the Biden DOJ weaponizing this law against pro-life advocates, many being elderly who were praying at these abortion clinics. So I don't want to hear that the protection's going to be for religious liberty. We already saw, I found an article from NCR online that states, "On the eve of the National March for Life rally in Washington, President Trump announced, January 23rd, he was issuing pardons for 23 protesters arrested for violating the Federal Freedom of Access to Clinic Act." Trump signed the pardons in the Oval Office. "They should not have been prosecuted," he stated. "Many of them are elderly people," he told reporters. "This is a great honor to sign this." The Thomas More Society, the Chicago-based public interest law firm, had earlier in January announced it had submitted formal requests to pardon 21 pro-life advocates convicted under the FACE Act. Right? It says they included, I won't go through all the names, but one was from Pennsylvania. Right? The two others convicted pro-life advocates pardoned by Trump are Herb of Pennsylvania, Herb Garrity. "Today, freedom rings in our great nation. Senior counsel for the Thomas More Society, the heroic, peaceful pro-lifers unjustly imprisoned by Biden's Justice Department, will now be freed and able to return home to their families and eat a family meal and enjoy the freedom that should have never been taken from them in the first place." So that's what this intent is, once again, at the state level. I have a question. It states here in the law, right, it says, "An individual may not, by nonviolent physical obstruction, knowingly interfere with a person because the person is a reproductive health services client, provider, and physical obstruction means the act of making entrance to or exit from a reproductive health service facility unreasonably difficult or hazardous." Okay? So does prayer make that unreasonably difficult? Can you guys answer that for me?
I can answer that. Thank you for the question. So specifically, that speaks to the rising threat that we've seen of folks calling in bomb threats, calling in, on purpose, calling into the lines of these clinics to obstruct the lines so that folks seeking to use these services aren't able to because the lines are jammed up, or calling in bomb threats, as you know, that need to be investigated. And so those are what is addressed when it comes to non-physical threats to these spaces.
Okay, so yeah, you're saying prayer would then be?
Did not, did not say prayer.
Right, correct. Obviously, you're not answering the question. So prayer could be?
I disagree.
Prayer could be unreasonably difficult for them to pass through, correct? Are you agreeing?
That is not, that is not in the bill.
Okay, well, that's 23 other pro-lifers have been arrested at the federal level for the same exact thing. So, okay, another question.
One more, one more question, Representative.
Okay, great. Thanks, Chairman. It is unreasonably difficult to walk past those counseling clinic clients. So let's say they're praying, standing there. Is it unreasonably difficult for them to just walk past them? Would that be another scenario that could be brought up against pro-life advocates?
Prayer is different from obstructing the pathway to these spaces. And so if once someone is praying peacefully, as is their right and as is permitted, that's fine. But if they are using their bodies to obstruct someone's way to get into these spaces, that would be considered not allowing folks to get their due access to these spaces as well.
But again, physical obstruction means unreasonably difficult or hazardous. Okay? And so that could mean anything to anyone. And that's why President Donald Trump had to pardon pro-life advocates who were thrown into federal prison for praying at Planned Parenthoods in places where human life is disregarded in this nation. And that's why thankfully Speaker Johnson defunded Planned Parenthood.
Representative, we're going to go to Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So he can repeat part of his analysis, and we're going to go to the next question. But this is exactly why we need the state protection that Representative Powell offered, because the federal government is not acting on these matters. Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, nothing in this section may be construed to prohibit, limit, or punish religiously motivated speech or conduct that is otherwise protected by the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth, or the Religious Freedom Protection Act.
Thank you very much. Representative Clunk on the bill 670. Any other comments or questions, or really comments? Chairman Kaufman, and then we'll go to the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I believe the FACE Act was, federal FACE Act was in place for decades and decades and was rarely, if ever prosecuted. And then came the Dobbs decision, and then came the weaponization of the FACE Act to go after peaceful pro-life protesters who would dare to exercise their First Amendment right, who would dare to exercise their freedom of religion, who would dare to exercise their God-given rights in our country. And any recitation of what is the analysis of the bill is not believable, because this is just a replication of the FACE Act of the federal level and attempts to do here in Pennsylvania to law-abiding Pennsylvanians who want to exercise their rights, exactly what the weaponized DOJ under the Biden administration did at the federal level. This, I know, I believe I saw on a calendar here in the Capitol today that there's a remembrance for William Penn Day here in the Capitol. And if William Penn could only see what we have become here in Pennsylvania as they try to limit the rights which this Commonwealth was established for, the reason William Penn came here back in the 1600s is what we are attempting to abridge today under this FACE Act. It is an abomination, and it is something that no one should be supporting here in this Commonwealth. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. We're going to go to Representative Hohenstein before we do the roll call. Representative Hohenstein.
Thank you, Chair. The reference just made to William Penn as founder of Pennsylvania is, and what he would or might have thought of what is going on today is what makes me rise now. I am the only representative of the Religious Society of Friends currently serving in the House of Representatives. There is one other person who serves in the Senate, who is also a member of the Religious Society of Friends, the Quakers. Quakers founding of Pennsylvania and Quakers influence on the concept of religious liberty in the United States has always been focused on concepts of tolerance and acceptance and the universality of a person's right to express their beliefs at the same time that the state would keep itself out of establishing any religion. That's why there is a two-edged sword aspect to the First Amendment in preserving freedom to exercise, but also a prohibition on the state from establishing a state religion. There is no state religion in Pennsylvania. There is no state religion in the United States. And William Penn, as a Quaker, would have recognized the very, very difficult process that we are endeavoring to solve and to, to provide a process for when we look at competing individual rights. When we speak of a person's right to control their own body, the integrity of their own person, their own physical person, that is a very, very fundamental right for that person. So too is the right to religious liberties. So too is the right to speech. But we, as a civil society, have to find the ways to resolve the conflicts between those rights in ways that are constructive and that respect those individual rights and beliefs as best we can. We cannot do that perfectly to have each and every single individual completely satisfied that their rights are absolute and unrestrained, because to do so would, by definition, restrain the liberty of other people. So what we're doing today and what we're doing with this bill in particular is working to strike that balance that needs to be struck in a civil society. And I believe it is a balance that William Penn, as the founder of our Commonwealth, would respect us doing, regardless of his own personal beliefs about any of the actions engaged or involved. He would focus on a governance that provided that proper balance and proper respect.
Thank you, Representative. Secretary, please call the roll.
Chairman Briggs.
Yes.
Representatives Abney.
Designation, yes.
Carroll.
Designation, yes.
Donahue.
Designation, yes.
Handbidge.
Designation, yes.
Hohenstein.
Yes.
Howard.
Designation, yes.
Kenyatta.
Designation, yes.
Kincaid.
Designation, yes.
Mays.
Designation, yes.
Piele.
Rab. Designation, yes.
Sanchez.
Designation, yes.
Schusterman. Chairman Kaufman.
No.
Representatives Bonner.
Designation, no.
Borowitz.
No.
Ecker.
Designation, no.
Hamm. Cale.
Designation, no.
Kirwin. Clunk. Kuzma.
Designation, no.
Ledbetter.
Designation, no.
Rigby. Shalaba.
Designation, no.
Mr. Chairman, this bill passes a vote of 14 to 12.
Thank you. House Bill 670 passes and will be reported as committed. Next on the agenda, the chair calls up House Bill 1640, primarily sponsored by Representatives Daley and Schusterman. Representative Daley has joined us online, and Representative Schusterman is a, as a member of the committee. I will recognize Representative Daley and Schusterman, if she'd like, for brief remarks on the bill. Representatives, you are in order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your bringing this House Bill 1640 up for vote in your committee meeting this morning. This bill would protect healthcare records related to reproductive services from disclosure in Pennsylvania's civil and criminal actions investigations.
Thank you very much. Counsel, please provide a brief description of the bill.
Mr. Chairman, the bill amends Title 42 to provide protections of reproductive healthcare records from disclosure. Specifically, the bill amends Title 42 to prohibit a covered entity from disclosing any records related to reproductive healthcare services unless an exception applies. Covered entities must inform patients that they have a right to withhold written consent for any record disclosures. Nothing in this section shall be construed to impede the lawful sharing of medical records or supplant existing state law or regulation governing the disclosure requirements for confidential communications, records, or information. The bill takes effect in 60 days. There are no amendments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel. The question is, will the committee report the bill, House Bill 1640? Are there any comments on the bill? Representative Clunk, you're in order on House Bill 1640.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question. I'm just trying to understand, on page 2, C4, line 27. So at this point in the bill, it will allow for disclosure when abuse is known or suspected in good faith for, and have exceptions for three categories of abuse here, for child abuse, abuse of a senior citizen, or abuse of an individual with physical or intellectual My question, in looking at this, is it doesn't include human trafficking, coerced abortion, statutory sexual assault, abusive individuals who are adults who aren't seniors? What about those particular individuals? Was that just a, was missed, or how would those scenarios play out under this bill?
Counsel, do you have anything to respond?
Mr. Chairman, that's not in the bill. I mean, if that's something that you're interested in talking to the prime sponsor with for potential amendment, I'm sure she would be willing to listen to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there's a glaring hole in this bill, and I will be voting no. Thank you.
Any comments, any additional comments? Chairman Kaufman, and then we're going to go to roll call.
Thank you. What, what issue that has happened here in the Commonwealth is this bill trying to fix? Like what, could somebody give me a scenario that has happened that we're, no, yeah, I'm not necessarily interested in hypotheticals, but like something that has happened that we are trying, that shouldn't have happened, that we're trying to make sure it doesn't happen again?
Counsel, or Secretary, I will try to answer that.
Mr. Chairman.
Without a hypothetical.
I believe the intent of this bill is to protect citizens of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and protect their medical records and reproductive healthcare records.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, yeah, I was, I, I don't know, I have so much trouble getting healthcare records under HIPAA. I just didn't realize we needed, needed this. And then when you, you, you draft, someone drafts a bill like this and then excludes, you know, victims of human trafficking and, and those, you know, who, who may have been victims of rape or coerced abortion, yeah, I, I don't, there's a big hole in this bill. And, you know, when, when a meeting is sunshine so quickly and sporadically, these are the kind of bills we get, ones that aren't ready for for prime time. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to go to roll call, but this meeting was appropriately sunshineed. I gave you a heads up on Wednesday, a week ahead of time. We used to have meetings off the floor with no notice. But I think you and your staff had plenty of time to review this bill. It's properly written and very confident I'll be voting yes, and all Democrats will be voting yes. Secretary?
Chairman.
And all Republicans will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. This bill passes a vote of 14 to 12.
House Bill 1640 passes and will be reported as committed. Next on the agenda is House Bill 1641 by Representatives Daley and Schusterman. Representative Daley, do you have anything to add to this bill? You're in order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This bill would instruct insurance companies to not take adverse action against healthcare providers who offer reproductive services to out-of-state residents.
Thank you very much, Representative. Counsel, please provide a brief description of the bill.
Mr. Chairman, the bill takes effect in 60 days and there are no amendments.
Thank you, Counsel. Are there... The question is, will the committee report the bill, House Bill 1641? Are there any comments on the bill, House Bill 1641? Seeing none of Secretary, could please call the roll. Chairman Kaufman, sorry.
I'll ask the same question that I asked the last time. What has happened that we're trying to avoid with this bill? What is a situation that has happened that we just can't let it happen again?
As a co-prime sponsor of the bill, Representative Schusterman has requested to respond.
Thank you, Chairman. A little history of this bill. This bill passed out of the House with bipartisan support. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that breadth of information. Since we have no reason to vote for the bill, we'll be opposing it.
Thank you, Representative. Seeing no further debate, Secretary, please call the roll. All Democrats will be recorded as a yes vote.
Chairman Kaufman.
And we'll all be reported as a no vote.
House Bill 1641 passes and will be reported as committed. Thank you. Next on the agenda is House Bill 1643, also by Representatives Daley and Schusterman. The Chair will recognize Chair Daley. I apologize, Representative Chairwoman Daley, for brief remarks on her bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, House Bill 1643 would prohibit Pennsylvania courts from enforcing other states' judgments in cases involving the provision of reproductive healthcare services.
Thank you, Representative. Counsel, please provide any additional information on the bill.
Mr. Chairman, House Bill 1643 provides a definition for reproductive healthcare services as a medical, surgical, counseling, or referral service related to the human reproductive system, including services related to pregnancy, contraceptive, or the termination of a pregnancy, which are provided in any hospital, outpatient clinic, physician's office, or other medical facility or office. The bill takes effect in 60 days. There are no amendments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel. The question is, will the committee report the bill, House Bill 1643? Chairman Kaufman on the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, it is obvious that this bill is wholly unconstitutional under Article 4, Sections 1 of the U.S. Constitution, which most know as the Full Faith and Credit Clause of the U.S. Constitution. It would never pass constitutional muster. There is significant case law out there. But I will just go in the land of Oz for a moment, and this is constitutional. And let's go there, where we have the Kermit Gosnell House of Horrors, which was located in Camden, New Jersey. And Kermit Gosnell fled the border to come to Philadelphia to hang out and seek refuge. It just blows my mind that we would be the haven for bad actors in the abortion industry. Of those who want abortion to be safe and legal for all women throughout pregnancy, to try to be a haven for the bad actors of the abortion industry would not seem to be on one's bucket list. But we will be opposing this unconstitutional bill, just first because it's unconstitutional, but second because it is dangerous for all women in Pennsylvania, and especially those who would be seeking abortions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. Secretary, please call the roll. All Democrats will be yes.
And all Republicans will be no. Thank you.
House Bill 1643 passes and will be reported as committed. Next on the agenda, the Chair calls up House Bill 1966, under "Any Other Business," also introduced by Representatives Daley and Schusterman. The Chair recognizes Representative Daley for brief comments on the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, House Bill 1966 would prohibit Pennsylvania courts from cooperating with out-of-state civil and criminal cases involving reproductive healthcare services and prevent officials from other states from arresting individuals in Pennsylvania for abortion-related crimes.
Thank you, Chair. Counsel, please provide any additional description of the bill.
Mr. Chairman, the bill takes effect in 60 days. There are no amendments.
Thank you, Counsel. The question is, will the committee report the bill, House Bill 1966? Are there any comments on the bill? Chairman Kaufman on the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, once again, would be a violation of the U.S. Constitution's Full Faith and Credit Clause. And inexplicably, the bill prohibits the governor from extraditing any person charged with treason or other crime who fled from justice for an offense relating to the provision or delivery of reproductive healthcare services. Accordingly, any person charged with treason who has also committed a botched hysterectomy, for example, may not be extradited. While it's unconstitutional, it equally is bizarre. So, we will be voting no.
Any other comments? Representative Hohenstein.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to make a comment on the concept of the Full Faith and Credit Clause. In this scenario, the Dobbs decision effectively threw all of these individualized determinations back to the states. It is actually one of the aspects of the Dobbs decision that I consider faulty on a legal ground, let alone the social policy of it. You know, I think the conundrum that we have now is that there will be a lot of competing state laws that conflict with each other. And the concept of providing full faith and credit to a state policy in one place that has an opposite in another state is a sad result stemming from the Dobbs decision. And I think it actually ends up being one of the reasons that the Dobbs decision won't survive eventual legal reviews or legal challenges in the future, is that these types of situations will be called up because we have been left to fend for ourselves in each of the individual states, rather than trying to create a uniform law that actually considers all of the different interests at stake and not just one or the other.
Thank you. Any other comments on the bill? Seeing none, Secretary, please call the roll. All Democrats shall be recorded as a yes.
All Republicans will be recorded as no. Thank you.
Thank you. House Bill 1966 passes and will be reported as committed. Next on the agenda, thank you, Representative Daley, for your work on these issues. We moved some bills for you, and thank you for your commitment. Next on the agenda is House Bill 2005 by Representatives Schusterman and Howard, both members of the committee. The Chair will recognize Representative Schusterman and Howard, if she would like, for brief remarks on the bill. Representative Schusterman, you are in order.
Thank you, Chair Briggs, for the opportunity to address my colleagues today on House Bill 2005. Barriers to obtaining healthcare that are imposed only on women are a manufactured and medically unnecessary method used to control women's bodies. A 24-hour waiting period means women must jump through unnecessary hoops and incur needless expenses to access healthcare. They miss work, incur extra travel expenses, and often must make additional childcare arrangements. That's right, the majority of women who obtain an abortion, whether through necessity or choice, are already mothers. Every medical procedure already comes with medically appropriate information so patients can make informed decisions. The counseling requirements currently in our state abortion law are designed as a barrier to care. My bill does not eliminate informed consent. Let me repeat that. House Bill 2005 does not eliminate informed consent. These requirements have always had one goal: to be an obstacle for a patient to receive the medical care that she and her doctor have determined is right for her. To decide to give birth is an extremely personal and consequential decision, one of the most impactful decisions human beings can make. Our self-determination is dependent on the human right to control our own bodies. Thank you, Chair Briggs, and I ask my colleagues for a yes vote.
Thank you, Representative Schusterman. Representative Howard, would you have anything to add to your bill? If not, we will go to Counsel Vitale. Here we are. Representative Howard?
No, just thank you, Representative Schusterman. You've said everything I need to say, and thank you for co-sponsoring this. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you, Representative. Counsel Vitale, anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, House Bill 2005 deletes Section 3204 from Title 18 to remove the 24-hour waiting period and counseling requirement under the Abortion Control Act. The bill does not change the requirement that no abortion shall be performed or induced except with the voluntary and informed consent within the Abortion Control Act. The bill takes effect in 60 days. There are no amendments. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Counsel. Any comments on the bill? I'm sorry. The question is, will the committee report the bill, House Bill 2005? Any comments on the bill? We will first go to Representative Borowitz.
Thank you, Chairman. This bill does strip out informed consent. So, all information given to a young woman or a woman, adoption, the risks of an abortion, counseling are all stripped out. Different alternatives for a woman, all of that would be taken out of the Abortion Control Act. Why wouldn't you want this for a young woman in Pennsylvania? And again, abortion is not healthcare. It's the elimination and the killing of a human being, right? There is two bodies, two lives, two heartbeats. The baby has separate DNA from the mother. And so, it's just unfathomable that the Democrat Party would want to even strip out anything in there that would give a young mom, right, the majority, I think the statistics are in their 20s, these young women counseling on alternatives like adoption and the risks of an abortion and what they go through after having an abortion. And so, it's just unfathomable to me that they would want to strip, and this representative would want to strip, that out of the Abortion Control Act. Any safeguards in that process of, you know, the killing of another human being. It's just unbelievable, and William Penn would not regard that. He would think it was abhorrent, what we're allowing in Pennsylvania or what they're trying to allow here. It will not be allowed, right? The killing of a human being till nine months, up until birth. It's extreme, it's evil, and it's awful. And then now stripping out any counseling, telling them to do otherwise? Just think of that. A constitutional amendment to allow it till birth and then wanting to strip out anybody hearing anything different, right? Any reason, any adoption, alternatives. Think of that. Thank you.
I recommend to all the members to read the bills before you speak. It's very clear the informed consent is, remains in the bill. Representative Clunk on the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I go back to when this particular part of our Title 18 was drafted and kind of the purpose behind it. And when I think about that, I like to think that those people who were sitting in our shoes thought about the women who were maybe being coerced, maybe were victims of abuse, those individuals who may be human-trafficked, to give them some time, some time that they need, that 24 hours to maybe make a phone call, call a friend, call a family member, to give them that additional time that they need to be able to make an informed decision. In our previous hearing, we heard about one of our testifiers talk about how the decision to have an abortion was very complex. And she talked about how she consulted with her spiritual community, communed with our family and friends. And after extensive gut-wrenching and deeply honest conversations, she ultimately decided to end her pregnancy and decided that that was the best decision for her family. Under our Abortion Control Act, women have that choice. We do. But the 24-hour requirement that we would be taking away in House Bill 2005, for some women who may need that, who may need that 24 hours to just say, is this the decision that is right for me? Giving that woman information, giving that woman time to contemplate with her faith community, with her family, with her friends, I believe is incredibly important, and especially in those situations where there may be abuse. I do believe we need to give that time. So, for those reasons, I will be voting no. Thank you.
This is a bill supported by the Pennsylvania Coalition Against Domestic Violence. You mentioned victims of domestic violence. And I do think if a woman needs that time, she could have that time, but there should not be a mandate of that time. Any other comments before we go roll call? Secretary, Representative Schusterman, before we go to roll call. You're in order.
Thank you, Chairman. I just also want to comment. The American College of OB-GYN and the American Public Health Association have issued statements opposing waiting periods and additional counseling. Thank you.
Chairman Kaufman on the bill, House Bill 2005.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, abortion is a very consequential decision. It can be a very invasive decision and both difficult to the woman's mind and body and spirit. And I don't, you know, I cannot, I don't know the last time I've gone into the doctor's office and they've said, oh, yeah, you need this procedure. Let's do it right now. I mean, I wait a lot more than 24 hours for anything that I go to the doctor for. I mean, I can't even get an appointment in 24 hours. I just can't imagine making such a consequential decision. And most who are making it don't recognize how it will impact them until many, many years afterward. Yes, I've spoken to post-abortive women who validate their decision, but I've spoken to many post-abortive women who wish they had the time out to take a breath and to make that decision. And in every circumstance, I would like to err on the side of compassion for the long-term health and welfare of women and babies in the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you. Secretary, please call the roll. All Democrats will be yes.
And all Republicans will be no. Thank you.
House Bill 2005 passes and will be reported as committed. Last on the agenda, the Chair calls up House Bill 1957 by Representatives Freel, Aden, Hanbidge, and Mays. We just had a hearing to fulfill our obligation to have a hearing on any constitutional amendment. The Chair will recognize Representatives Freel, Aden, and also Hanbidge and Mays for additional remarks. Representatives, you are in order. We'll begin with Rep. Aden. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of House Bill 1957. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of House Bill 1957. For nearly 50 years, Roe versus Wade gave Americans confidence that their most personal healthcare decisions were protected, grounded in the constitutional right to privacy. But since the Dobbs decision overturned that precedent, we've seen a devastating shift in the landscape of reproductive healthcare. Abortion is now banned or severely restricted in nearly 20 states, and we've seen the human cost. Preventable maternal deaths in Texas and Georgia, and even a 10-year-old rape victim forced across state lines to receive care in Ohio. In the face of that loss, voters across the country have stepped up. From California to Michigan, from Ohio to Maryland, people have gone to the ballot box to defend reproductive freedom and enshrine the right to bodily autonomy in their constitutions. Pennsylvania must be next. As a woman and as a mother to a young daughter, I feel a deep and personal responsibility to protect these rights, not just for her, but for every Pennsylvanian. Our call to action is clear. We must advance this amendment and give voters the chance to decide for themselves. House Bill 1957 proposes a constitutional amendment that guarantees every Pennsylvanian the right to make their own reproductive healthcare decisions, including the right to choose or refuse an abortion, contraception, and fertility care, free from government interference and discrimination. And let's be clear, the right to reproductive freedom and bodily autonomy extends far beyond pregnancy. In Georgia, Adriana Smith's body was kept alive through medical intervention after she was declared brain dead, without her consent or her family's consent, solely to continue a pregnancy. That case laid bare the moral and ethical crisis that occurs when government inserts itself into deeply personal medical decisions. This is about privacy, this is about autonomy, this is about our future. There is no role for government to play in these decisions beyond the ethical standards that already guide our medical professionals. House Bill 1957 is not simply a reaction to a crisis, it's a safeguard, it's a proactive, durable protection for generations to come. The path forward will be challenging, but it's essential. I urge you to support this bill and to help ensure the right to privacy and reproductive freedom that is permanently protected in Pennsylvania's state constitution. Thank you.
Thank you very much Representative. Counsel, please provide a brief description of the constitutional amendment.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of extra points. This section shall apply to all individuals without discrimination on basis of race, age, disability, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, or relationship status. The Commonwealth may not deny, burden, or infringe upon, or abridge the rights unless justified by a compelling state interest achieved by the least restrictive means. Also, as a proposed constitutional amendment, this bill must pass each chamber of the General Assembly in identical form in two consecutive sessions before it is presented to the voters. This will be the first time through the General Assembly. Thank you Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much Counsel. The question is, will the committee report the bill, House Bill 1957? Are there any comments on the bill? Chairman Kaufman. Representative Kerwin, you're in order on House Bill 1957 for comment.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Wherever you may stand on this issue of abortion, as well as reproductive matters, and I can really appreciate that many different people feel differently than I do, I believe that it's reasonable to agree that abortion is an incredibly consequential and heart-wrenching procedure and decision for a myriad of reasons, especially when it comes to a minor, a child, having an abortion. Our current law in Pennsylvania requires parental notification for a child having an abortion. Now, this proposed constitutional amendment, and we've heard it from the scholarly testimony from the hearing, will likely erase that parental protection and also severely reduce parental rights. Parents deserve to be involved in their child's lives, they deserve to know about a procedure as serious as abortion, much less have knowledge about it. This constitutional amendment will likely remove that protection and also remove current abortion safeguards, common sense safeguards that are in place, and further limit the ability of the legislature to act on this matter in a common sense manner. I'm going to be opposing this legislation for that matter, as well as other matters, a myriad of reasons, and encourage others to do the same. I do thank you Mr. Chairman for the opportunity to be heard respectfully in my opposition today to House Bill 1957. Thank you.
Thank you very much Representative Kerwin. We have a little bit of a list. Representative Borowitz, on the bill, House Bill 1957.
Thank you Chairman. Okay, so this allows the termination of a pregnancy. Representative, what is being terminated? What, okay, this constitutional amendment allows the termination of a pregnancy. What is being terminated?
I guess I'm not understanding your question. This is not, this is not a decision on behalf of the government to terminate anything. This is a decision on behalf of the people of Pennsylvania to uphold a woman's right to her own decisions about her own body and how her body will be used.
The baby's body is not the mother's body, okay? So you can't tell me what you're terminating and allowing in your legislation all the way till birth. What are you terminating? It says a termination of what? What is being terminated? What is being terminated in that pregnancy?
I think you're making my point for me.
So you're going to pass a constitutional amendment? You're going to pass a constitutional amendment? You don't even know what you're terminating in a pregnancy? I mean, this is a common sense, Chairman, question I'm asking, what they're terminating? What is being terminated?
Please begin your comment, and we have a list of speakers.
Okay, I just want it noted for the record that the Democrat Party doesn't know what they're terminating, okay? I'll let them know, it's a baby, it's a human being, it's a life made in the image of God, and the Bible actually says he knows us before we were in our mother's womb.
Representative Pielek.
No, I have comments, I'm sorry, I was just kind of a little upset because of the atrocity that this is. Okay, so determination of a human life. This is a constitutional amendment to allow abortion on demand until birth, able to terminate a pregnancy, meaning the killing of a human life all the way up into 40 weeks of pregnancy, possibly beyond that with the born alive. I don't even think there's protections for that. I have a model 12-week baby here, which I'm not going to go against the Chairman's wishes because God forbid I actually show us what a baby looks like at 12 weeks in the womb, or have a quote prop, right? I also have a 16- to 18-week baby, if anybody would like to see that at the end, of a model in the womb, and a 26-week baby, which we allow abortion here in this state up into 24 weeks. I wish I could pass them around again, but I know Chairman Briggs, you know, wouldn't allow that. Now, which ones are...
You're such a rule follower, that's very impressive, thank you.
Which ones are we willing to protect today? An eagle egg, which we all want protected, right? We all want our eagles protected. Do we want to protect an eagle egg or a human unborn baby? Sadly, eagle eggs have more protection than an unborn child created in the image of God. Look at their hands, look at their feet, again, come look at my model babies, perfectly formed in the womb by our Creator. Fifty-six men signed the Declaration almost 250 years ago that we were endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights, and among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. How are we here, that the party of JFK now wants to enshrine the killing of a baby all the way until birth and celebrate it? There's a complete disregard for human life and the understanding that all human life has value. That baby has unique DNA from its mother and a unique fingerprint. It is not our DNA, there's two bodies, two heartbeats, and two lives. This is so simple, it's so simple. I'm going to, again, give you the biggest baby model, which I can't pull it out right now, but if you'd like to see it, 26 to 8 weeks, 28 weeks in the wombs. Who's going to be a voice for them? Who's going to stand and speak for them who have no voice? More than 30,000 abortions in Pennsylvania happen every year. Stand for them, stand for the unborn lives and the human beings that they are and speak for them. Thank you.
Representative Pielek, on the bill, House Bill 1957.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Heard a lot today, we all have, from the testifiers and my colleagues, and I thank all of them for their testimony. I don't take this vote lightly. This is perhaps the most emotional issue that we can take a vote on here in the judiciary. But I will cast my vote unequivocally nonetheless. I will remind everyone that over 52 years ago, the Supreme Court made a 7 to 2 decision, clearly stating that the right to privacy includes a woman's right to choose. And then among those justices were several conservatives who voted yes because they held to the very fundamental and conservative belief that the government should not control how a woman chooses to do what she wants with her own body, come to this circumstance. Now, we fast forward to recent times, and the current court overturned Roe v. Wade despite decades of precedents. Now, some of us can disagree, and we could spend hours on the soundness of the decision. I personally think it wasn't a sound decision, but that's not important. What is clear and what is important is that they did, in their decision, throw this issue to the states, and that we are to decide if this right should be protected by law. So here we are, and when I see the alternative, not protecting this, with present proposed legislation, it's not like we're just leaving this alone and we don't need this, I keep hearing that from the other side. Why do we need this? And when you look at the proposed legislation that's been out there, that would outlaw abortion despite life and death health risks, without exceptions, even for rape and incest and pedophiles, we're not just talking about grown women, we're talking about children, I'm asking all the men, the fathers, think about this, husbands, think about what that means, that your wife will have to carry a rapist's child. That's more Taliban than American. And because of that, I emphatically will vote for this, to protect a woman's right to choose. Thank you.
Thank you Representative Pielek. Representative Clunk, on the bill, House Bill 1957.
Thank you Mr. Chair. In light of the testimony that we heard earlier this morning, and in reading the bill, I did have some questions, especially after hearing Professor Kirk's testimony. So, under this particular bill, and with current Pennsylvania law in mind, we have restrictions on partial birth abortion, we ensure we have parental consent, and we have 24-hour informed consent. So, can somebody identify which of those particular provisions would survive under this bill if we are considering the least restrictive means test?
Would you like Counsel to answer that?
Mr. Chairman, the constitutional amendment doesn't affect the current Abortion Control Act. We're not repealing the Abortion Control Act at all, this doesn't affect it. This is a constitutional amendment that, after passing the legislature two consecutive terms, would go to the people of the Commonwealth to vote it either up or down.
Thank you Counsel. So if that is the case, it's not, I still continue to have some questions about that. So let's just assume, you know, hypothetically, that if this bill would pass, we have a constitutional amendment here in Pennsylvania. I do believe that that could be something like Professor Kirk said, where we could be embroiled in litigation for years to determine whether or not the partial birth abortion ban that we do have, the parental consent, and that 24-hour informed consent would still be viable. I think this could create confusion for our providers during that particular time when litigation could be pending, and I'm, you know, putting on my mom hat and Chair of the Children and Youth Committee hat. When we talk about parental rights and minors, and my good friend from Dauphin County brought this up, I have concerns where the rights of parents could be lost in all of this. And I have two daughters, so I would like to think that I would know, and that I would have the right to know, if my daughter, she was underage, would be undergoing a surgical abortion, just like if she would be undergoing an appendectomy, tonsillectomy, any procedure. And so, in reading this, and I understand what Counsel said, I do believe that there are concerns for parents, because when you look at the bill, and like the professor said, the bill would guarantee every individual, and if you look here, individual is not defined. It's not, well, an individual means, you know, a person over the age of 18, or a person over 14, or a person. What exactly does an individual mean? And so, I think that this will, again, lead to endless litigation like has happened in other states, and really could put parents and their children in a really tough situation. And that's not what we want here in Pennsylvania. When I look at this, I also go back to, you know, some of the concerns that I've brought up before about protecting children from child abuse, from sexual abuse, human trafficking. Are there protections here in this particular amendment to ensure that those individuals will have protections? I don't know. Like the professor said in her testimony, she said the Pennsylvania Legislature, if we would move forward with this bill, move forward with this constitutional amendment, we would be advocating our proper lawmaking authority to the judiciary, to fashion policy on a matter that is deeply relevant to an important state interest and to the protection of the common good. We have seen so many times where we have just passed on this ability to legislate to the judiciary, and then we get decisions from on high, literally on high, they're up on the, you know, fourth floor here, and the people of Pennsylvania sit here just questioning, why? Why did the legislature give that ability to another branch of government? It's actually one of the first things that I tell my interns is, don't give up your power. It's the one thing, the power of the people. To have these debates here, if we pass this, we could potentially be silencing our people to have the ability to come in here, to provide testimony, to provide information, to have doctors come, provide medical advancements on how we could be potentially legislating in this space to protect the health and welfare of our citizens. So, you know, for those many reasons, I cannot support House Bill 1957. I would encourage my colleagues to do the same, and I go back to just the other day when I woke my daughter Claire up, and I saw her profile, and it looked the exact same as it did the day that I saw her with a very clear image at our 20-week appointment. She looks the same, folks. She looks the same. I go back to that moment, and I cannot vote in support of this because I know what I saw that day, and I know what I saw when I woke my dear Claire up. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Bonner, on the bill, House Bill 1957.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. I know that this is a very difficult issue for all of us today and for all of our citizens across the United States. Just want to make a few comments about the history of abortion and this constitutional amendment in particular. So, no government recognized the right to an abortion for millenniums. It first occurred in Russia, following the Bolshevik Revolution in 1918. Until then, no... Until then, no government officially sanctioned the right to an abortion since the 4th century. So we have Russia leading the movement in the 20th century, hardly a bastion of human rights, and the movement for abortion rights from Russia then expanded to the Soviet Empire, godless nations, and unfortunately ultimately made its way to Western civilization and into the United States, where in 1973, the United States Supreme Court in Roe v. Wade indicated there was a constitutional right to an abortion. This right existed for 50 years, but prior to that, we had millenniums where this was not recognized as a constitutional right. But even in Roe v. Wade, the United States Supreme Court said that the states had the right to enact regulations in the final three months of the pregnancy because there was a strong and viable state interest to protect life at that point in time, if it so chose. This particular constitutional amendment will move, remove that right from Pennsylvania to in any way protect the fetus in the final three months of its viability. This proposed constitutional amendment, then, will allow for an abortion in the final days of a pregnancy, days before a child is going to be born, even though the child and the mother have no health issues whatsoever. It will allow for the end of life for that fetus. So I think at some point, we have to ask ourselves, what rights, if any, does a fetus have? Under the law, the fetus has the right to inherit. So if the father dies while the fetus is in the womb, the fetus is recognized as a child and has the right to inherit. If the fetus is injured while in the womb, the fetus, through the parents, has the right to file a lawsuit for the injuries sustained while the fetus was in the womb. The fetus also has the right to remedial health care, if needed, assuming that the parents want that child to live. But interestingly, the fetus has a number of rights that the law has recognized for centuries, but the one right it does not have, and the one right that we are particularly extinguishing through this constitutional amendment, is the right to life. So the fetus has many rights recognized under the law, and yet it doesn't have the most basic right, the right to life, and this particular amendment will totally extinguish forever that particular right. You know, during the debate between our two presidential candidates, the one question that Kamala Harris did not answer in the debate was when President Trump asked her, "Do you think that the fetus can be terminated up to the point it's born?" She didn't answer that question, and I think there was good reason she didn't answer that question, because the American people recognize that that is a great travesty, and we will answer that question today with this vote. And the vote today is yes, the fetus should have some rights in this process. It is a human being in the womb entitled to protection, and even under Roe v. Wade, protection that was recognized in the final three months when it was viable. This constitutional amendment will wipe out all rights of the fetus, and I don't believe the American people, and certainly the citizens of Pennsylvania, would support such an extreme approach to the right of life of the fetus in the womb. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. We're going to go to Representative Schusterman on the bill, House Bill 1957.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to bring it back to the state, and I'm hearing a lot about freedom, I'm hearing a lot about liberty. So I want to talk about my own personal freedom and liberty. Personal reproductive liberty will preserve my self-determination and bodily autonomy, and they are paramount to my human rights and my essential freedoms. So I want to thank the maker of the constitutional amendment. By moving this forward, it is one step closer to the hands of all people who vote in Pennsylvania. So may the people decide. Thank you.
Chairman Kaufman, and then we're going to go to roll call. Chairman Kaufman?
No, I have more comments.
Recognized already, Representative. Chairman Kaufman?
I didn't know there was a limit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This morning, we learned about House Bill 1957. We have heard very heart-wrenching stories of choosing abortion and life when faced with difficult pregnancies. In both of the circumstances that we heard, they made their choice here in Pennsylvania, and absolutely nothing has changed, and that same choice could be made here today in Pennsylvania. We were told that it is imperative that we pass this amendment because abortion is somehow at risk in Pennsylvania. The proponents have attempted to create a need for this amendment, but the status of the abortion industry in the Commonwealth couldn't be any more contrary to the imperative of what we have heard this morning. Real data shows that the abortion industry is robust here in Pennsylvania. For abortion proponents, there is simply nothing to fear. In 2021, there were 33,206 abortions performed in Pennsylvania. In 2022, the year of the federal Dobbs decision, that grew to 34,838. The following year after the Dobbs decision, the number grew to 35,412. Abortions have continued to grow year after year here in Pennsylvania without regard to any Supreme Court decisions. Despite that fact, we are supposed to believe that the sky is falling in order to vote for a constitutional amendment which effectively establishes an unrestricted right to abortion, potentially right up to the moment of birth. It will seek to gut Governor Casey's Abortion Control Act by putting many of its restrictions, including parental consent, to a nearly impossible strict scrutiny test. While I recall the Democrat mantra of my youth, for abortion to be safe, legal, and rare, this seeks to dramatically expand the number of abortions here in Pennsylvania. But just as concerning, this amendment doesn't seem to stop at abortion. It appears that any effort to deny gender-affirming hormone therapy to children on the grounds that the treatments would impair the child's fertility would unquestionably be challenged as infringing upon the child's personal reproductive liberty. As parental rights are winning around this country, this amendment will attempt to diminish parental rights in some of the most critical decisions young people are faced with. This amendment is unnecessary, but even more, it's dangerous to the future of Pennsylvania's families, and we will be opposing this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to roll call, abortion is legal in Pennsylvania. This is a constitutional question for the public to decide if it should be in the Constitution. I think it should be. Secretary, please call the roll, we're going to do the long roll.
Chairman Briggs?
Yes.
Representatives Abney?
Designation, yes.
Carroll?
Designation, yes.
Donahue?
Designation, yes.
Handbidge?
Designation, yes.
Hohenstein?
Howard?
Designation, yes. Kenyatta?
Designation, yes.
Kincaid?
Designation, yes.
Mays?
Designation, yes.
Piele?
Rab?
Designation, yes. Sanchez?
Designation, yes.
Schusterman?
Yeah.
Chairman Kaufman? Representatives Bonner?
Designation, no.
Borowitz?
No.
Ecker?
Designation, no.
Hamm?
No.
Kael?
Designation, no.
Kerwin?
No.
Klunk?
No.
Kuzma?
Designation, no.
Ledbetter?
Designation, no.
Rigby?
Shalaba?
Designation, no.
Mr. Chairman, this constitutional amendment passes a vote of 14 to 12.
Thank you. Secretary, House Bill 1957 passes and will be reported as committed. This meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, members.